Hey, Tanya.
Hey, Adam. How are you?
Good, you?
Doing all right.
Oh, and my video is not working, but at least we got audio here.
It's like everything else.
Everybody's seen me before. I guess it doesn't matter.
Technology is breaking down from all the use, I think, because everything I touch has a problem with it.
I know. You know, and it's always those times like when you really need things to work. It doesn't work. When I'm sitting there at the office and I'm not waiting on anybody. But yeah, when I'm in the middle of a Zoom meeting, it decides to, you know, collapse.
Go and Alex on, and then we'll hear from our council members as well. Anyone else that we need to make sure we have commemorated in the meeting minutes? We're okay with that, Adam?
Yep, I mean, I'm Adam Zachlekowski, planning and building director for the town of Fortville.
Great. Okay, the agenda for this evening is the selection of a president and vice president as we head here into 2021. We're going to do the approval of the minutes, then we're going to do a public hearing on a case. We will do board comments and adjournments. So if anybody hasn't seen, that's going to be the agenda. And so the next item up is selection of the president and the vice president. So typically, we run this through a nomination process. Alex or Adam, is there a preference for order there? President or vice president?
I'd say why don't you select the president and the vice president?
Got it. And we can do this through motion. So any of our members can make a motion and then what? Just it's been since September. So those Robert's rules will make a motion second, we'll have discussion and vote. So would anybody like to make a motion for a selection of president?
Well, I'm motion for you, Lacey.
Okay, a motion from Jason and Brittany, do you want to turn your motion to a second?
For Lacey.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, motion is second. Lacey will learn as president. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And abstain? Okay, let's head on to the vice president role. We can entertain a motion for the selection of the vice president.
I make a motion for Scott Meyer.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Amanda. So a motion by Brittany and Amanda, you have a second. Please, any discussion with this? Okay, let's go ahead and call a vote for the role of vice president for Scott Meyer. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And any abstain? Okay, a quick work of agenda item number two, we will now move to the approval of the September 2020 minutes.
So. Yesterday.
Like, you know what? It is like it happened just yesterday. So any questions on the September minutes that were circulated by Adam? Okay, we can entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 2020 minutes submitted.
Thank you, Scott. A second.
I will second.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any discussion? Let's call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, we are now on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Case number 01, RZ 2021 for 410 South Oak Street is a rezone. I'm going to turn the mic over to Adam, and Adam, I believe you have some content you'll be sharing with us this evening as well.
Yes, I do. Great, thanks, Lacey. I go ahead and share the presentation here. Okay.
Good. We got it, Adam. Good job.
Okay. All right, so the case before you tonight is a proposed rezone of 410 South Oak Street. And the property is about 0.17 acres, looking to change it from residential 3.5 or 3.5 to commercial community or CC. The request is being made by Fritz Fents. He's the property owner. And the reason he's doing this is he'd like to construct a parking lot at the rear of the lot, which would connect to an adjacent property for the future Denver's Pizza at 110 East Broadway. And I'll show you concept site plan momentarily for your understanding. And per the owner, per Fritz, the house on this property may remain long term or it may be demolished for additional parking. If we take a look at the zoning map here, you can see that everything that you see in red, which is along Broadway, is owned community commercial. And then this crosshatched area is the subject property, so it is adjacent to that commercial district. And then the beige that you see here is all residential 3.5. If we take a look at the aerial, you can see the lot in question. You can see the house at the front. There are some residential dwelling units off to the west, off to the east, and then to the north is that commercial corridor along Broadway, and there's an empty lot that Mr. Fents also owns here between the subject property and Denver's Pizza. This is a oblique aerial image, which kind of shows you a little bit more clearly what the lay of the land is right now, and certainly we can always refer back to these if we need to. And then here's a photo of the existing home on the front end of the property. Here is the concept site plan that I alluded to. Now, you're not being asked to vote on the site plan tonight. That would have to come back to the plant commission. It's tentatively scheduled to come back to you all for a public hearing in April. But I include this so you can get an idea as to how the project will work and why Mr. Fents would like to include this lot into his proposal. You can see that the house would remain in front and parking would be in the back, and it would connect to the remainder of the parking lot on that vacant lot that I was showing you. In terms of town council comments, first reading, which was the introductory reading of the rezone ordinance occurred on March 15th. And the comments appeared to be generally supportive, but there was discussion about restricting out some undesirable uses that are allowed by right in the CC zone district. We'll get to that momentarily. So as some of you will recall, for any rezone that occurs, Indiana law requires you to consider a number of different factors in making your decision. So we'll roll through each of these factors in accordance with the Indiana code. So number one, is this proposal consistent with the comprehensive plan? Yes, it is. The town of Fortville Future Growth Concept Map from March of 2016 does identify this parcel as commercial. And if you take a look at that map, it actually, the comprehensive plan shows commercial all the way down to the next street that runs parallel south of Broadway. I believe that's High Street maybe? Number two, is it consistent with the current conditions and the character of the current structures? I might say technically not today, but it would be upon development. Additionally, having a historic home near a commercial corridor on Broadway that could be used for professional services like an accountant, a law office, that could be reasonable for this structure. Number three, is it consistent with the most desirable use of the land? I'd say yes. The parcel is shown as commercial in the comprehensive plan. So in many ways, that outlines the most desirable use that the residents had had asked for at the time. Number four, is it consistent with conservation of property values? I'd say yes. My opinion would be that it would not negatively impact the surrounding properties, providing that reasonable restrictions on lighting, parking lot screen, landscaping are provided. It is, the area is adjacent to commercially zoned land already, and it's very close proximity to the Broadway commercial corridor. Second, I'm going to put something on mute. Somebody's making some noise here. Okay. All right, moving on. Number five, is it consistent with responsible growth and development? I'd say yes. Since it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and adjacent to commercially zoned land, it'd be consistent with responsible growth and development. Now, in terms of community response, we have received some remonstrance on this proposal. Mr. Terry Hiles, the owner of 210 East Broadway, 409 South Oak and 415 South Oak are opposed to the rezone and have expressed some concerns. Joyce Perkins, who's the renter at 409 Oak in one of Mr. Hiles's property, she's opposed to it as well. Both are opposed to it. Those letters were provided to you, but they basically expressed concern about lighting and noise. Mr. Bob Sterrett, I forgot to mention in the report, but I gave you his email that he had sent over. Had some concerns about screening, landscaping, things of that nature along the property as well. I'll point out his house. This is a location where some of those remonsters are. So if you see the star, that's the subject property. The Sterricks live to the west, and then these are the three properties that are owned by Mr. Hiles. So you can see the proximity to the subject property. So with that, my recommendation as staff would be that on the basis that the comprehensive plan shows the land is commercial and it's adjacent to a commercially zoned area, I'd recommend that the plant commission grant a favorable recommendation to the town council for the rezone subject to the following condition. Number one, the only commercial use is allowed on the subject property shall be a parking lot and/or professional services should include an accountant, a law office, et cetera. And then from here tonight, whatever you're, if you take action on it, whether, well, whatever the recommendation is, whether it's favorable, no recommendation, or unfavorable, it would be scheduled to go back to the April 5th town council meeting, at which time the council at second reading can either approve, deny it, or take no action on it. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain those. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Do any members of the planning commission have questions for Adam?
Adam, just Scott, if we were going to, if I understand this process correctly, we're just looking, we're not looking at the overall site plan right now. We're just determining if we're changing it from residential to a community commercial, right? We don't have to, like, I understand some of the remonstrance, but I feel like some of those things can be rectified or fixed during the layout of how that property is going to be used. Is that when we would do that then?
Correct. So think of it this way, what you're really looking at now is a land use decision of whether or not commercial in and of itself is a good idea and advisable. And then think of the site plan review as getting into more specifics on the layout of how that land use would be utilized.
All right, any other questions, Brittany?
I'm I'm good. Thank you.
I've got a question for Adam. On the, looking forward at the land use that has been laid out, I think you said it was in 2016, even though that property is not zoned commercial right now, but will be or could be in the future, how many approximately lots deep off of Broadway does that proposal extend?
It goes all the way down to the next street, which I want to say is High.
High Street, you're right.
Yeah.
So Adam, I do have a couple of follow-up questions. There are about eight to 10 common themes that came in through the letters of remonstrance, and not all of them, as Scott mentioned, are something that we would consider today in the rezoning, but some of them are. And so maybe perhaps you can, Adam, address for us the spot zoning that came in as a, in the affidavit?
Yeah. My opinion, that's an easy one. This wouldn't be spot zoning because it's adjacent to a commercial corridor. If it was, if, if he was asking to rezone just one specific lot in a residential neighborhood and it's surrounded by it, that would be spot zoning.
Okay. Another item that carries with the zoning is typically a discussion about traffic. And so maybe, Adam, you can give us your thoughts, or is that something that we should consider within the rezoning? But that did come in through remonstrance. Could you maybe offer your comments about traffic?
Sure. In terms of traffic, obviously, for a project for a restaurant this small, that our town and most towns across the country wouldn't require a traffic study or anything like that for something this small. Is it possible that there could be increased traffic in that area? Surely, yes. That would be misleading to say otherwise. But at the same time, my feeling is that most of that traffic is going to be oriented towards Broadway. Sure, there'll be some traffic that could cut through the neighborhood, but as you know, Broadway is the main corridor there. So, yeah, there could potentially be more traffic, but part of the reason for having this parking lot is to at least get those vehicles off the street as much as possible onto private facility.
Okay. Another item that we consider that was in the remonstrance is typically in rezoning is about drainage. So any concerns from your perspective or any, I mean, we'll get more into drainage next, next time around, but any questions or concerns right now on drainage for the rezoning?
No, no issues on drainage. I mean, you know, the drainage comes up as part of a rezone, but that's always done as part of the technical review. In this particular case, because it's an urban downtown site, if there's any drainage issues, it would be resolved during stormwater system that's in play.
Which would come with a potential review by the county.
Yeah, we'd most likely have the county surveyor take a look, though at the same time, again, because of the size of the property overall, there would not be a need for a detention pond or retention basin.
So the other items that were mentioned that I noted were hours of operation, fencing, lighting, road flow, and noise. Those typically would be something that we consider not directly in rezoning, but we might. So I'm just maybe preserve some of the questions there. Nathan, anything else that you have?
I guess along those lines, what you're talking about, I feel like to consider this rezone, it would be nice to understand how the intent of the property, you know, what's the square footage of, we know the intent, I guess, square footage, number of tops, because that's all going to dictate traffic flow. You know, there's, I think they've got 19 spots detailed, but if there's only eight tops in the business, you know, likelihood of having 19 vehicles and traffic issues, and I don't even know that 19 vehicles frankly is going to cause a traffic problem. But I'd love to, I don't know if this is the right spot for it, but just kind of hear the details of the business. It feels like they're intertwined. We're not supposed to talk about all this together, but I feel like the remonstrance is mostly about the business, and so understanding the business will help us make our decision on this entire piece.
Absolutely. And Nathan, I think your question should be probably directed to our petitioner, and we'll be going to that in just a moment. But let me just, I see that Cheyenne might want to ask a quick question.
I think we also need to think about this because we're not approving that business. We're approving that lot to have permissions of the commercial, what was a community commercial. So even if this restaurant might only have 19, something that comes in the future because we've rezoned this could have, you know, as many as they wanted. So we kind of have to like remove a little bit what's on there right now and think about what that allows overall.
If I could throw something in, the, in the drawing, if you look at the parking that's already proposed or already done, we're adding to the backside of that. So the increase in traffic really shouldn't impact beyond the house where the parking is behind it, the property or the partition, the petitioner already owns. We're creating more traffic behind that house. So there's, I don't see more traffic, but I, kind of going to Nathan's point is that we're just approving a spot for five or six more parking places. So again, not increased traffic, but that business is already there. Those parking spaces are already there. We're just going to give him a little more room for parking space behind property already owns. That makes sense.
So, Brittany?
Yes, but there is also mentioned the future possibility of demolishing the house and either putting in more parking lot or putting something else there. So you have to consider what else could go there, future noise, future lights. And that is further in amongst other houses. So if it's zoned commercial, then you could eventually have, you know, another commercial property further back in amongst the houses. So it's another thing to consider.
Both the short term and the long term, I think we need to, and that's the appropriate role of this commission. So in our, in our agenda, we do have time, not only to hear from the town and their recommendation, but also to hear from the petitioner. So anybody here representing this, this, this agenda item who would like to speak to some of the topics we've been talking about?
Real quick, Lacey, I'm sorry, before we jump into the petitioner, to Brittany's point, if, let's say the parcel is, let's say it's demolished and completely reimagined, and this is probably for Adam, the new site plan would have to come before us, correct? So we would still have, they couldn't come through and completely reimagine this and, you know, turn this into a three-story bar without without this coming before this body. So it's not like we're just, we're giving a blanket approval for anything in the future. So I think there's still a little bit of protection for us in that sense.
Thanks, Nathan. I believe that the limitation on parking and professional services is for the existing property. What we can hear from Adam, and now we're in a bit, Adam, I want you to think about it if you need to, is if there is a demo in a new property and sort of a professional services use, will that new site plan come our way? Adam?
Yeah, I can just chime in on that really quickly. If we put those restrictions in place, then we can ensure that things like a bar or restaurant or a gas station or any kind of other, you know, commercial uses would not be allowed in that zoning district. So you have the ability as a plant commission, and then ultimately as council, to town council, to restrict out certain uses as part of the rezone. So to me, I think that'd be advisable in this case because it is close to a residential area. I think the only other thing is, I think from a historic structures perspective, I don't know the exact condition of that home. I would say just from observing it that it is, it's a pretty neat home. And, you know, if the home can be saved, that's always preferable, but at the same time, it would probably, you know, if the parking is really needed and the home needs quite a bit of work, if demolition did occur, I could see that happening, let's put it that way.
All right. Thanks, Adam. So let's go ahead and move to the next subpart of this agenda item and hear from the petitioner. So do we have anybody representing the petitioner, or the petitioner himself? Would I can offer any comments? Okay, we do have time on our agenda for, for remonstrance. So we did get some previous letters from anybody who's attending today, who maybe perhaps has questions, clarifications, or maybe?
I'm sorry, hey, I hate, I'm sorry.
I think we got you. I had you on audio, but you might be stalled out on video.
You guys are breaking up.
Okay, Fritz, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, that's on, that's on your end, Fritz, because everything's perfect here.
Would you, Fritz, would you like to call in sometimes with the Zoom? You can call in.
I'm only getting every other, there's a voice message on this. I can't even hear you guys.
Okay, Fritz, can you call in? That's usually a much better way. I'm going to, Adam, would you mind putting that into chat for Fritz?
It was working earlier.
Yeah, thanks, Cheyenne. Does anybody have the number that he can call into? Oh, look at that, Brittany, Cheyenne and Brittany. Man, we didn't miss a beat around here on this, on this commission.
What, what's the code number? I don't have the gen in front of me.
I will put that into chat as well. Does it?
Should be on the agenda. There we go. All right, thank you.
There you go. So Fritz, try calling back in if you would.
Shut the internet off or something. I don't know. It's breaking up.
Let's mute. Let's, let's give them the benefit of the mute. There we go. Thank you very much. Okay, we do have, okay, we can unmute you now. Fritz, you back?
Perhaps I can answer some questions.
Perhaps I can answer some questions.
Uh, I think I'll give you just a moment because we do have time on the agenda for the petitioner.
Okay.
We can, Fritz, yes, thank you. Yep.
Is there any way we can stop these Zoom meetings? Uh, hold on.
Yeah. We're on the agenda item for the petitioner. So if you would like to offer some comments, uh, in the agenda on the, um, for, as the petitioner for this agenda item. Fritz?
No, the, the, the bulldozing the house is later on, if, if it ever happens. It probably will never happen. And, um, a lot of these things that they brought up, I had already talked to Adam about the lighting. I had concerns about the lighting a long time ago. And I sat down and I talked to Adam about like, there's no, there's no lighting in the ordinance. So how bright or how, um, and so I suggested we hire a lighting engineer for the town because this is going to come up um, more often.
That, that's not something that we would consider, especially as it relates to a
Oh, I know.
Yeah, let's, Fritz, please just put that on. Yeah, let's, let's not talk about that under your, uh, under your petitioner. Um, I think there's a question about
Okay.
business and the type of businesses going on the adjacent property that you own. Give us a little bit of background there.
It's just a pizza restaurant.
Okay, yeah, an hours of operation?
Uh, probably eleven to ten.
Okay, and, uh, uh, I, I eleven to ten, Monday through Friday weekends as well?
Uh, maybe Friday and Saturday night might stay open until eleven.
Okay, and you're going to be putting a privacy fence, uh, in order to screen, uh, from?
Yes.
Got it?
Yes, yes. It's, it's in the drawing.
All right. And in the long-term use of the property, um, that we're talking about rezoning here, half of it will be used as a parking lot and the other half, you are willing to say professional services only within uh, within the building that's there now. And if you do have any type of demo or reconstruction, you'll be coming back with a new site plan to this commission.
Yes, yes, definitely.
All right. That was some leading questions. Apologize Fritz, but that happens sometimes when we're on a, when we're on a Zoom meeting.
Right, right.
Sure, let's, let's follow it up. Scott, go ahead and ask Fritz a follow-up question?
Well, someone else asked about occupancy of the pizzeria.
It's, uh, seating insides for sixty.
Sixty?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's not ni-, it's not nineteen parking spaces. I have twenty-four. There's, uh, there's four extra along the side of the building.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, will you ever do a live outside live music venue at this, um, location?
We could, we might, we would have to, uh, ask just like, um, Jake Burgess does.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Fritz?
I do. Fritz, when I reviewed, um, the aerial of this property and just did some quick measurements, I saw that it looks like the shed is actually located behind the house, not beside the house.
Yes.
And so are you going to have to remove the shed? I'm, I'm just curious.
Well, we're doing, we're going to move the shed, um, next to the house. It's going to be used for like, um, probably maintenance type of, um, stuff like, um, one of those leaf blowers that, uh, blow parking lots clean and uh, probably a lawnmower in there and just some regular garden tools for landscaping.
Wondering about the shed being considered, um, another outbuilding on the property?
Okay, yeah, it's, that, that's what I'm saying. It's going to be part of the opening there at the, um, in the fenced area. Where there'd be a door there that, uh, it would mainly be a maintenance for landscaping, a bushes and mulch and gardening of the landscaping.
Is, is that shed on the property that we're talking about tonight, or is that one shed on the property that you already have?
No, it's on, it's on the
It's already there.
Adam, would you mind showing us the, um, the layout on the screen share? I think it's shown on the depiction right next to the property, but in actuality, it's a bit behind it as, as Brittany mentioned.
Yeah, it's about thirty-two feet from the alley.
Maybe not the, the, the site plan, maybe the overview, uh, the actual, yeah, so you can see here the site plan is showing it adjacent. There's that little shed. It's kind of in light line, Scott, over there to the left, halfway down. But the actual picture, um, can you go into the, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Any other follow-up questions for Fritz? All right, we do have time on our agenda for those remonstrators. So if you have any questions or clarifications, uh, that you would like to pose, we do not reply to those directly. We just take that information in. So we do have time to start that now. Anybody would like to, um, have a remonstrance or ask for clarifications? Mr. Owens, I saw you.
Yeah, thank you.
The amazing thing about Zoom is that I can predict who's going to speak next by a little green light. So Mr. Owens, um, I, 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 you're here to, uh, remonstrate perhaps?
Yes, members of the board. I, I'm here on behalf of Terry Hiles and he submitted an affidavit. And I'm not going to waste your time rereading the whole affidavit to you. I just want to highlight just a, a few points. Uh, in going through the process of the rezone, your number two consideration, uh, your, your staff said that it does not meet consideration number two presently, but they hoped it would sometime in the future. So, you know, we think that's a problem. Um, is this the most desirable use of the property? I mean, that's obviously a matter of opinion. We disagree with that. We think it's a quiet residential area. You're talking about a, a very nice historic home. And, uh, the idea of tearing it down and putting in parking, we think, um, is not desirable. Uh, we also disagree with the idea that, uh, changing this quiet residential neighborhood into a commercial parking lot is not going to hurt the values of the homes around it. Uh, I, I think we'd be kidding ourselves to say that a historic home in a quiet neighborhood is somehow worth, uh, the same as one next to a, a parking lot where you have people coming and going as late as eleven o'clock at night. The noise is a big issue with what's being proposed. The idea of having people coming and going as late as eleven o'clock at night. And I know the site plan is not specifically before us, but as it's drawn, all of that traffic is coming straight out at one of these seventy-seven-year-old, um, people. And it, you have the headlights, you're going to have car alarms, you're going to have all those kinds of things that go with this. If you're talking about putting restrictions on it, the idea of having a fence completely around it probably makes some sense. Uh, we would ask that a restriction be that no access, no direct access be provided to this property off of, of the Oak Street or one of the other adjoining, adjoining owners ask that the restriction that it not be accessed through the alley. There's plenty of frontage to come in directly off Broadway and, and pull into this area without subjugating the whole neighborhood to the cars coming and going on Oak Street. One of the concerns had to do with alcohol. And it, I guess it's not clear at this point whether alcohol's involved or not, but if you're putting reasonable restrictions on the property, uh, we would ask that an additional restriction be that the property not be used, uh, to serve alcohol or to provide parking to people who are consuming alcohol. The, um, the, the idea of it being, not being spot zoning because it's adjacent to the existing current commercial corridor. I mean, it, one of the diagrams showed the commercial corridor along Broadway and it shows this lot essentially being in the middle of that whole area and pushing into the residential neighborhood. Uh, we think that, uh, the property as it is presently sized is sufficient for the present use. And, and we would ask that the, the board make a negative recommendation and, um, not push this commercial use further into this quiet residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mr. Owens. Thank you for your comments. Uh, we do have time in our agenda for any other remonstrators, anybody who would like to either speak against or ask for clarifications. Okay, record should show, uh, that we have no additional. We do have time in our agenda as well for those members of the council, uh, the town council who have additional questions or other government officials. Okay, record can show that we have none. We now go to a time in our agenda where our, uh, commission can ask additional questions and clarifications after he, hearing from the petitioner as well as remonstrators. And, uh, I'll open it up to our, our members to see if there's any additional questions. Okay, the one item that did come up, I believe that was new that we hadn't discussed before is with Mr. Owens and the use of a liquor license. I think the ask was that we would not extend, um, the ability to park at a location if the adjacent was serving alcohol. I, 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 that, that's kind of a, a cross zoning thing. That sounds kind of unenforceable, but Adam, your opinion on that one?
Opinion on?
So the question was, uh, could we consider a condition that says that the parking cannot be used for anybody who has consumed alcohol?
I, I don't know how you would enforce that.
Yeah.
We can't, I, I don't think the Fortville police are going to want to do a breathalyzer with every single person that walks through that lot.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a difficulty as well as we are, are sort of, um, strapping with a, bootstrapping another property. Uh, I think that's a difficulty.
I mean, what, what I'll say from a staff perspective is one thing that you could consider if, if Mr. Fence is amenable to it is, um, it sounded like it was fifty-fifty whether or not the house would be torn down or would be kept. And maybe, maybe to respond to some of the concerns about keeping that residential feel over there, um, maybe if Mr. Fence is willing to keep the house on the property, um, that might solve some of the concerns.
Okay. Um, I will now, we do have time for us to go back to Mr. Fence. If, Fritz, if, can you respond to that? Would you be willing if, if one of our conditions were to?
Right, 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 right. The, the house isn't going anywhere. My son lives there. It's not going anywhere.
Okay, so there'd be no concerns if we put it as a condition?
Right. It's not going anywhere. The house is staying.
Okay, uh, any other questions from our members? Just as a tally of the conditions that we've heard thus far, uh, one of the conditions that was recommended by Adam is that we have a limitation of the rezoning rights to parking and professional services. So that was a, um, thank you, Adam, for, it's just, I say it and it just appears. Uh, so thank you for that. That's one of the conditions. Another condition that we heard recommended for our consideration is that we provide only for, um, direct access to the adjacent property and not on Oak. So that direct access was a second condition. And a third condition that we've heard proposed to us uh, was that we would, uh, remove, uh, the opportunity for demolition of that, of the, the house, of course, without further, um, commission approval. I think those are the three conditions that I've heard. Anybody else heard any others? Scott? Anybody telling any others?
No, but I was going to ask Adam, if you don't mind, Lacey, can, can you scroll down to the picture of the access to this? Uh, that, the parking that's already there? A-Adam, am I reading this correctly? If you move your cursor down, that entry, that's off of Oak Street, right?
Right.
So whether or not we approve this rezone, traffic's coming in off of Oak and there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah.
Correct?
It is, it's preserved.
Uh, so I have, I, I take a little issue with, we can't change that because that's already there. It's done. So, um, that, that's all I wanted to see.
Thanks, Scott. Again, those are three conditions that have been recommended to us, um, that we might consider. So let's, let's go ahead and, and see if we can call for a motion.
I do have a motion.
You do? That was me just asking for a motion. You interrupt me when I do that because that's, we put, with the motion, always interrupt me. Go right ahead.
I thought somebody else said something before I interrupted you, somebody.
Brittany, was that Brittany? Okay, Brittany, go right ahead.
I was going to ask, he, they're showing, uh, these parking spots and looking at the Google aerial. It does not look like this other parking lot is there. Is there an existing parking lot currently behind Denver's?
Adam, could you answer that one?
Uh, no, no, to my knowledge, it's just dirt back there. There may be some gravel. I'd, I'd have to confirm with Fritz what's there today.
It's gravel.
And Fritz, will you be intending to, uh, surface the adjacent lot in the same manner that you would purpose this proposed new lot?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's gravel right now.
Okay, and will it continue to be gravel?
No, it's going to be paved parking lot.
Both the rezone today as well as behind?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Brittany, is that good for you? All right, let me roll on back to Scott who has a motion cooking for us. Scott?
I, I would make a motion that we send a favorable recommendation for case zero one RZ two zero two one regarding four ten South Oak, the rezone with the conditions that the, the building maintain its, well, we leave the building in place and that it's, uh, um, Lacey, what was the other condition we had? I, I don't want to, I don't
Solely used for parking and professional services.
Parking and professional services and that we are not going to tear down that structure.
Got it. All right. Well stated on those. Thank you, Scott. Is there a second for Scott's motion?
I will second that motion, Scott.
Thank you, Cheyenne. We are now open for discussion.
So I think the can, the concern about access off of Oak will come up during the site, the site plan review, because it looks like right now there's curb. So that can be considered. That's something we can talk about next, at, at the next meeting, I think. Um, to, to Brittany's question, because it looks like, yeah, it's a, it's an empty lot with, with curb. There's not a curb cut there currently. So that's something that will be tabled for, for private next meeting. So that, that all discussion point.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Yeah, and we have a list of items. Should we see this come back? We're gonna, uh, we'll be revisiting certainly.
Was Joe wanting to say something?
Joe?
Yeah, if I may, just, uh, real quick, I mean, we want the business to be successful and to have places for people to park, I think is important. Um, some of the brief discussion I've had with N dot, you know, N dot and the engineers that are looking at the road diet for Broadway, uh, there's access control that's going to be implemented with that. So there will not be access to the front of this building uh, off of Broadway when it's completed. So Oak Street and the alley will be opened off of Broadway and nothing in front of the old Denver Station there. And again, if you're only approving five or six parking spots there, um, it looks like there's going to be a parking lot there anywhere. There's going to be people going in there. I think we would much rather have people parking in a parking lot rather than lining those streets on those side of streets. So.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to make a favorable recommendation for this agenda item with two conditions. Number one, that they be limited to parking and professional services. Number two, that there's no demo of the historic structure on site. Let's go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of this favorable motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. All those abstaining, please indicate that you abstain. Okay, the motion carries and, uh, we will keep our lists of open items because, uh, let's revisit those next time around. Uh, thank you for getting right back in the saddle for this group. Now, this is our, uh, this is our, our chance as a planning commission to ask any additional questions. We do have time on the agenda for any other comments or, or, or any open items? Okay, if not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion. We adjourn seven fif-, seven sixteen.
Seven sixteen. Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Everyone seconds it. Just put in the minutes. It was good to see y'all, but everyone seconds it. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Everybody.
Take care.